We'd like to welcome you today to the inauguration of our mayor and the county council for the island of Kauai. We'd ask everyone to stand please for the sounding of the Puhu Kani. Palpada Mia'oli, patahla'ukalei ma'ana'oli na.
Oi'ui ana'ui a'i'u'a, au'ono'i da'hi o'e kai'uku. Kai'uku, Kai'uku, kulei, 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 kulei. No'oka au'ono'a, au'ki da'hi he, kulei, 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 kulei. Kauia me kahe'i, ke'ano'e iue'i, oi'ale, kulei, 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 au'ku'oku'oi kaua'ana. Ee'i'i akome'i, ano'ano'e'i, iku'olo'olo'ui e kaku'e.
Ne'e papuka'elu'akalai'ipunaho'a, he'ao'ano'ao'aku'oke'ali. He'ali'i, he'iva'iva'aka au'ono'i'ula, he'puna'hele'ohina'ma'alamanui. He'nu'i ku'aloha'naka'ua'kani lehua, he'lehua'ku'aloha'naku'e'kuine. Miniki no'ka'ua, lave'ekamakani, au'ki pauka'ana'ike'one'oa'ku'a. He'aloha'e, he'aluha'n'ao.
Oh, say can you see, bright as dawn's early light, What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last meeting? Whose such lights and bright stars drew the perilous tide, O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the one first in the air, They grew through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
These beautiful Palpada Na'vi's children will now sing for us, "Kauai'ipunahi." Yes, Taipu'okumu'la'apumu', sorry, Malia Alohilani Rogers.
Kauai'ipunahi, na'na'i au'oi, Me'ha'e, na'ka'ua'e pale, ne'e'a'hi'e. Kauai'ipunahi, na'na'i au'oi, Ma'ku'ala'ie, kame'a. Me'ha'e, na'ka'ua'e pale, ne'e'a'hi'e.
We do have one more special song, and we would like to draw your attention out to the seats back there. It is the Jubilee Church of Ni'ihau singing "My Country, 'Cause of Thee."
Ima'ha'e, ima'ha'e. Ima'ha'e, ima'ha'e.
If you would stand, if you stay standing, and we'd ask that you hold your applause until I've introduced all my representatives today. Representative State Representative Senator Ron Poochie is his wife Joy. Representative Derek Calacamy is here. Our Trustee Dana Hunnig of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. County Sheriff Reverend Martin Sidian Kalkel Honolulu. General Counsel representing Senator Jacy Girono. Captain Drew Kaye, Commanding Officer Piamara and his wife Suzie. Commander Lieutenant Donahue, Executive Officer Piamara and his wife Susan. President Semeno, Hawaii former state representative. Lieutenant Kusak, former sheriff of Hawaii. Lieutenant Lassie, former prosecutor of Hawaii. Vice President Wodani representing Senator Brad Schatz. And Raga Sibanka, liaison for Kauai for a former, I guess, candidate a few minutes ago, our governor of Hawaii. Would you give them one of my compliments? Right now, I'd like to invite to the podium for an invocation Father Anthony Urquanto from the St. Catherine Church.
Almighty, Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations. We ask you to send your spirit of counsel upon our mayor Bernard Cavalijo Junior and the members of our county council. May your eternal blessing grant them the grace to work together to make the best decisions for our island community. Give our mayor your strength and guidance along with your wisdom, because he is so humbled to serve the people of Hawaii and Ni'ihau and the future generations of our island Ohana. For Lord, it has been by your guidance that he has been led on this path to serve us as our leader. Finally, we ask you, oh God, to bless our leaders in government and employees as they serve our community with humility, pride, honor, and trust. We pray to you, who are Lord and God, forever and ever.
I'd like to invite up right now Reverend Kazu Nori Takahashi from the Lihuit Huangwanji Mission.
It's morning in the morning. In the morning sun's halo. It's the morning shakamuni. In the morning sun's halo. It's the morning shining in the morning.
We respectfully call upon Amina Buddha, Shakyamuni Buddha, and the Buddhas of the Tainan Ten Directions to enter our place of ceremony. On this auspicious day, may the wonderful blessings of all the Buddhas embrace Mayor Bernard Cavalijo Junior and his family, and the members of the county council and their families. May the knowledge of our connection to one another and this planet illuminate your way. May they be granted the wisdom and confession to unite all people and all thoughts with the warm spirit of aloha and to guide our Ohana, our friends, our communities, all the families, and all the people on the beautiful islands of Kauai and Ni'ihau. May the light of Buddha's wisdom shine upon the paths as we strive toward the realization of the best in us. May the peace and blessings of the Buddha be with you this day and always. In gratefulness, I will resign the sacred name of the Buddha of immeasurable light and life. Namo Amida.
We're pleased now to hear another hymene from the Jubilee Church of Ni'ihau. To invite to the stage the Honorable Judge Randall O.G.P. Valenciano to administer the oath of office for the mayor and our new council. And a presentation, certification, and reactions will be by County Clerk Ricky Watanabe and Deputy County Clerk Jay Fontenan.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today, we'd like to present the official certificate of reactions. First of all, Bernard P. Cavalijo Junior here.
And now Urquanto, council chairman. Rosca Gallow, council vice chair. Councilmember Mason Chau. Councilmember Gary Alonzo. Councilmember Errol Cottrell. Councilmember Kipai Corde. Councilmember Joanne A. Kimor. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our new council and mayor.
Can I have the mayor approach the podium? Mayor, if you can raise your right hand, repeat after me. I-
I, Bernard P. Cavalijo Junior-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the State of Hawaii-
The Constitution of the State of Kauai-
And the Charter of the County of Kauai-
And the Charter of the County of Kauai-
And that I will-
And that I will-
Faithfully discharge my duties-
Faithfully discharge my duties-
As mayor of the County of Kauai-
As mayor of the County of Kauai-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
If I could have all of the council members stand please, if you can raise your right hands, the dude right there, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I- Do solemnly swear- That I will support and defend- The Constitution of the United States- The Constitution of the State of Hawaii- And the Charter of the County of Kauai- And that I will- Faithfully discharge- My duties as council member- Of the County of Kauai- To the best of my ability. Congratulations. With a nice round of applause, would you welcome to the podium the new chairman of the Kauai County Council, Chairman Nolos.
Honorable Mayor Cavalijo, esteemed council members, members of the Hawaii State Legislature, honored guests, family and friends, aloha. I am humbled by this honor to take the podium today to address the citizens of Kauai as the newly appointed council chair of the Kauai County Council. I share the deepest aloha and respect for my colleagues who have bestowed me with this privilege as well as my predecessors, that I spoke a little of earlier, former chairs, Kipra Singh, Jay Fofaro, Ron Poochie, the list goes on and on. Who brought so much to the table with their strong styles of leadership, which really are tough acts to follow. But I look forward to being the leader that you have entrusted me to be. I will lead with a level of fairness, equity, efficiency, and mutual respect that is often spoken of but difficult to achieve. Clearly, the newly elected council is a diverse body with a multitude of visions and goals. Saw a little bit of that this morning. But I'm confident that our different strengths will bring about positive change for the County of Kauai and help to rebuild our community and restore the community's faith in the integrity of local government. How to bring about change in this day and age is a difficult task, one that should not be addressed lightly. So what kind of changes, improvements should we make? You know, throughout my entire campaign, I could hear the plea from our citizens. Get back to business, focus on core services, and do the will of the people. Our citizens are very concerned, and rightfully so, about the stability of our county. The first thing that I am proposing is for the administration and the council collectively identify key tangible goals to get done in the first year of this new term. Mayor Cavalijo, I know your commitment is strong to getting things done, and I'm optimistic that we will be able to work together in the best interest of the people. I thought about putting this in and decided to do it. For example, Puhu Road. How many of you concerned about Puhu Road? I don't want to put the mayor on the spot here. Let's make a vow to have Puhu Road paved, let's say within the next six months. He said yes. You know, when it gets to Puhu, wait long enough, and don't get me wrong, you know, Puhu Road is not the most critical issue in Kauai. But you know, it's one of those issues that can be resolved, and we have heard so many complaints from not just Puhu people, but people all over the island that use that road. But that's a start. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kikaha. We actually did meet, and we spoke of several roads that need to be moved up on the list. We need to focus on projects where our citizens will see and experience results and understand that their tax dollars are working for them. They deserve to have safe and healthy communities, to see clean bathrooms at every park, proper maintenance of our roads and equipment, stadiums and ballparks that are well-kept and safe. Mayor, fellow council members, let's get behind these efforts and improve the quality of our facilities and our quality of life for our citizens for their enjoyment and their quality of life, because that is what they deserve. That is what they deserve. The second thing that I am proposing is that the administration and council focus on making some internal improvements. How do we do this? First of all, we start by not filling any current vacant positions and learn how to do more with less. We look for areas internally where operations can be tightened and refined, and I can say this proudly that in the council services we have already made the decision not to fill our vacant positions, and we're going to ask our employees to do more with less. We streamline operations and employ efficient tactics utilizing new technology, not focus so much on spending the hundreds of thousands of dollars of studies, but actually looking at technologies that work and implement. In all areas of government, we talk to each other and not about each other, sealing the cracks that have created disorder and misunderstanding over the years. We effectuate an auditor's office that produces quality performance audits that factually portray the performance of our departments and agencies. Factually portray. We need to know where we have inefficiencies before we can fix them. If we incorporate these five ideas seriously and sincerely, our county and our community will grow and prosper. The third improvement that I am proposing is to restore the county's financial stability and eliminate the uncertainty that many people have today. The county's financial status is at one of the forefronts of our residents' concerns, and again, rightfully so. Especially when news reports out there are so negative and ominous- Especially when news reports out there are so negative and ominous, many times inaccurate. Our residents are concerned about tax hikes and fee increases. We need to eliminate their uncertainty by finding innovative ways to improve our financial picture. Because at the end of the day, we all choose to live here on this beautiful island of Kauai and Ni'ihau. And in order for Kauai to stay the same special place that we all know and love, our residents need to be able to continue to call this their home. I implore my colleagues that when we begin a budget session in the next few months, that we all take a real approach to the budgeting process. Items that are not of core or central, that are not core or essential to protect the health and safety of our county and our citizens should be held off. Likewise, projects such as alternative technology for the disposal of solid waste and other important programs should be aggressively pursued. Two years we have, we have two years. Imagine what can be accomplished in two years if we remain focused, if we define a vision, a goal, and we stick by it. I'm calling on my colleagues right now sitting at the table to help define, mold, and grow our vision. Vice Chair Rosca Gawa, I look forward to having you as my right-hand man. Not scary, but I'm counting on your no-nonsense approach to streamlining our finances. Vice Chair Gawa will be chairing the Public Works and Parks and Recreation Committee. Councilmember Chau will be chairing our Planning Committee, one of the toughest committees on the council. And Councilmember Chau has displayed a leadership that we believe will serve us well in the Planning Department. Congratulations. Councilmember Kana Shiro, the new guy, will be chairing the Budget and Finance Committee. That's a great way to start. Why, you might ask? Well, he is a certified public accountant, very familiar. I know he looks too young for that, but he is. But he is well-versed in finances and budget. And the Budget and Finance Committee will be tasked with administering the budget and working with the administration this year to come up with a balanced budget. Councilmember Kori, welcome back. Economic Development and Intergovernmental Relations Chair, he has served in that committee in the past, he has served it well. He will also be, I'm hoping that he will be taking over the National Association of Counties Board of Director, which I plan to propose to this body to nominate him for that position. But again, lots of experience in that area, and we look for a very productive committee in economic development and intergovernmental relations. Councilmember Yukimura. That was my turn. Councilmember Yukimura will be chairing the Housing and Transportation Committee once again, as you all know, she's relentless. She's persistent, and she has a very deep passion for housing and transportation on the island, so she will be, once again, chairing that committee and expect a lot of good things out of that committee as well. Councilmember Hoosier. Councilmember Hoosier will be chairing the Public Safety Committee. And again, with his experience in the County Council and the state senate and in many leadership roles in state government, that we look forward to some productive issues coming out of committee and looking forward to serving with you as well. Lastly, on behalf of my colleagues here, and I know I speak for them, I'd like to thank all of you for being here, especially our families and our supporters. Because of their unconditional love for us and allowing us to do this, it's possible for us to serve the community, so if I'm sure I speak for all of you, all of you right here in the front row and the spouses and and families, thank you very much for all of us, and can we please give them, the families, a word of gratitude? In closing, I am very, very excited because today is a new day. It's a fresh start, a little rocky, but it was a fresh start, and there's so much to do. At times, the road that we're about to travel is windy, steep, and full of potholes. But we must press on. We can rebuild this community, we can restore the people's trust, and we can repair relationships. Theodore Roosevelt, who was a very fine president, but even more a fine man once said, "In life, as in a football game," I love football. The principle to follow, and I think Mayor Cavalli, a former lineman, can attest to this, the principle to follow, he said, is hit the line hard. Hit the line hard, Red Bear, hit 'em hard. My challenge today to the mayor and my colleagues sitting on the table that have been so fortunate, as well as myself, to be elected by the people of Kauai and Ni'ihau, is to inspire and invoke change, is to hit the line hard, and it starts right now. I just ask you to join me in this effort. Thank you all for being here today. Appreciate your time and your support. God bless you, and of course, God bless America. Thank you very much.
We invite back on stage dancers of Hala'kalé moki hana'oleina'ala. Under the direction of Ku'uhula'oleina'ala of Hava'ul Jorin, they will be making their fourth return to the Very Monarch Festival this year. Halal has placed many times in the past few years. Nikki Ishibashi was the 2014 entrant for Miss Aloha'ula, she plays fifth. Jaina Shafer will be representing the halal for this year's competition. Ku'uhula'alea is presently in Osaka, Japan, but would like to extend her love and aloha to our mayor, his administrative team, and the county council on this very special day. They do a song of our island talking about the beauties of Wa'ale'ale, nani Wa'ale'ale? This young man, wait, he's not so young anymore, he used to be younger. But this young man has been representing our island of Kauai for a number of years already. And he started off as a young boy at Kapaha, played football for Kapaha High School, went to University of Kauai, played there, played for the Miami Dolphins. But this local Kauai has moved up the ranks, not just in football and sports, but as he came home, he started working for the County of Kauai in many different capacities. He's a huge supporter of Mayor Brian DePist, and through the years, I think he's mentioned that he's learned a lot from our former mayor, DePist. But no matter where you are politically, agree or not agree, I think everyone agrees that his soul, his heart, his spirit is Kauai. And although he may disagree in some things, I think we all know that he wants the best for our island and continues to work hard to do that. Please welcome our mayor.
Very excited, everybody. Good afternoon and aloha. It's a great day, everybody. Mahalo for that wonderful reception. I feel so blessed and honored to be standing here today on the first day of the next four years and the final four years that I will serve as your mayor. It has truly been a privilege to serve as mayor of Kauai and Ni'ihau, Ni'ihau, since 2008. I thank each and every one of you for your continued support. To our council chair Repose, and the returning new members of the Kauai County Council, congratulations. I truly look forward to working with you with respect and aloha every step of the way. I'd like to start introducing my wife Regina, who's been by my side all the time, there's not ups and downs, here and there, she's loud with me, Regina. Thank you all, you're here, everybody's home here, Bremen. And my daughter Brittany, and of course, Selena, my five-year-old granddaughter, and our new grandson, who'll be two, three months old tomorrow, Nahua. My mom is here, of course, from Kauai, where his mom is here right there. And of course, my dad Bernard Senior, who's been a pohaku, the rock, throughout this entire years of service to the people of Kauai and Ni'ihau, he's been by my side. My family has been very strong and very supportive, whether here or from afar, and I'm so, so thankful for my family, my aunties, my uncles, everybody, and they're just standing strong and respectful and always reminding me, never forget that wooden spoon, you can get cracks. So be respectful, no matter what hat you wear, it comes from the heart. Next to my family, I'd like to, of course, I wouldn't be standing here today without the aid and support of an amazing team. Now, Council Chair Repose mentioned football, and of course, always talking to our staff, our cabinet members, about being on the field, on the ten-yard line, looking into best and orderings, to pass that policy, whatever we got to do, fix that pothole. And so that continuously comes about, and I'd like to really thank each and every one of them. Now, as you noticed, they're all wearing their long-stick white shirt and the different colored legs, alo is about the moku of our island, and we wanted to really perpetuate that. So I would like to introduce, of course, my managing director, Nadine Nakamura, Nadine stepping to the plate, and her husband, Jayland, are here. And I want to introduce our cabinet members. Our cabinet members by moku, okay, you guys ready? So when I say moku, you just stand up, okay, and remain standing. From the moku of Halea, please stand. You guys, Halea is green. You know, it's very pressureful to be under this condition right today, but I really appreciate them, they're impressed every time. From the moku of Kauai. From the moku of Kuna. From the moku of Kuna. There you go. From the moku of Akali. And of course, from the moku of Ni'ihau, Ni'ihau right over here, stand up, Ni'ihau. We're going to start making decisions based upon how our land divisions are separated on beautiful island, you'll see what I mean very shortly. Mahalo to our dignitaries from the state and federal levels, and from my business community, our nonprofit community, the educational community. You all know who you are. So much has been accomplished through the partnerships we've created. It's about coordination, cooperation, and collaboration, pretty much what Council Chair Repose had mentioned earlier. Finally, I wanted to acknowledge our delegation, of course, from Ni'ihau, thank you so much, Leana and Ohana from Ni'ihau for being with us today, mahalo for that. You are an important part, and never forget, everybody, of our Ohana. And one of my goals has always been to continue to involve Ni'ihau into everything that we do, and I want to make that clear to everybody, we're just going to stand strong. We are the County of Kauai and Ni'ihau. Give a nice round of applause, okay? Four years ago, I stood here and we went on a journey. We went on a holo-holo journey around the island of Kauai, from Ke'e to Ko'ke'e. And together, we envisioned what our island would look like 10 years into the future. Now, it was a very compelling and amazing journey, we called it Holo-Holo 2020. And since December 1st, 2010, many of you have jumped on board and helped make the various aspects of Holo-Holo 2020 come to life. So much has happened since then, things we talked about four years ago have already come to pass. Number one, we're taking cars off the road in Ke'e via our North Shore Shuttle Pilot Project, which by the way, numbers George Vasta, almost 900 or so, right? Passengers, so that's a good thing, we're just trying every step of the way. We've added five acres of land to Halea Black Pop Beach Park, and the master planning process will start in 2015, early 2015. The Kilagat Actar is in the hands of the community, and we hope to break ground in six months. And sales in our Sunshine Markets have increased 40%. Ke'ala'eli Makala is almost complete, except for one small section. We will be able to enjoy this beautiful coastal path from Ligon Park all the way to Kuna'ape, that's happening fast and will be completed, yes. Bus shelters are in construction. Kauai Community College students are riding the bus on passes that are included in their tuition, and bus ridership has nearly doubled. Kade'oumahe'au is well on its way to full restoration and becoming a treasure cultural resource that is unique not only to Hawaii folks, but to the world. Ko'ke'e Road, Chair Repose, is paved top to bottom all the way. So that was a big, big push there between the partnership of the state and the county. And of course, all the way to the beautiful west side, Kekeha Gardens Park is under construction and almost complete, tama Kekeha. Come on, Ke'kaha. And that's just the beginning. Holo-Holo 2020 is in full stride. We'll continue to put those projects and more at the forefront as we move forward. Some of our highest priorities, and I look forward to working closely with our county council members and the leadership team. I believe they are yours as well, as mine as ours. Opening an adolescent treatment and healing center. Breaking ground on Phase One of Lima Olap. Are bringing affordable housing project in Elieli. Finishing Ke'alahele Makalae from Kuna Bay to Liddge. Making significant progress on our new landfill and Resource Recovery Park site. And we will continue to ask for your partnership because that's the only way that things can happen. Remember, it's not just action, it's action with aloha. You might have noticed that there's a big emphasis at this inauguration on our host culture, the Hawaiian culture. Mahalo to our Hawaiian civic clubs for being with us today to properly lead our procession. Mahalo to the beautiful children at Kavakini's Charter School and the Hula Lava for sharing the gift of music. As I mentioned, it is truly an honor to have our Ohana from Ni'ihau here today. You may have noticed the display of moku signs in the lobby area and the lei worn by my cabinet in the color of the sixth moku of Kauai and Ni'ihau. Knowledge of our moku, our ahupoa'ah, and the history of the various places where we live, work, and play are going to be front and center for me as my team moves through the next four years. I would like to acknowledge the team from Kauai Nuikuu Papa, some of whom are here with us today for bringing this awareness to light through signage, educational programs, and technology. The team consists of Ke'al Nismit, who's Ke'al, is Ke'al here? Ke'al Nismit, Ke'al, sit down. Randy Victor, Kevin Molotov, Kaloy, Aluna, Justino Roy, and Beni Luca. So those are the guys along with many partners. It's not just those people, folks, but they had the vision to start it. We worked together, we jumped on board, and we're moving. Very shortly, our ahupoa'ah signs will be installed around our island, very shortly. Being mayor has provided me with a unique view of the world. You see it from all sides. From top to bottom, of course, from bottom up, side to side, and of course, in every way in between. And that's what it's about, having your head in a swivel, so to speak, football terms. Having peripheral vision. I can see it here, but I can see our council members here and I can see here. So many things happening at one time, but we gotta have vision to understand how to handle those issues that are before us. I see these things. We're growing more and more our own food, producing more of our own energy, and of course, getting out of our cars and moving around by foot, bike, and match transit. Being mayor has provided me with all of this. I've seen how quickly we're moving forward, making technology and renewable energy and innovation work to our advantage. I see these things as a sign of bridging our past to the present in order to build a future that is sustainable and culturally connected always. I am committed, over the next four years, to embrace the native culture of Kauai and Ni'ihau in a way that hasn't been done for decades, maybe even centuries. Let's immerse ourselves in our history and base our actions on knowledge of our moku and ahupoa'ah. Let's make action with aloha more than a phrase. Let's make it come to life. Before I continue, I want to share with you some manao from respected kupuna who can remember what it's like to live the values and culture of the native Hawaiian lifestyle. Please enjoy the video.
The hooki means to pull. And lau refers to... How did you find lau? Anyway, lau is the tea leaf that was used. And it's an object that's put on a piece of rope so that it hangs and it has motion to it. So they pull on the rope and the lau was tied to the rope. And that's what you're pulling in, and the net. In the old days, there was just one piece of net at the very end, which was like a bag. And the rest of the line was just rope with this lau all tied to it. And that's hooki lau. They pulled on the rope until the net got closer. And the lau kept the fish within a water. So they did it, and they all eventually went into the net. So that's what hooki lau is.
It's a thing, they got a big fishing net and they make a big circle in the bay here, or water here. And they have people come to it and pull it in. You know, you have what they want anyway. A lot of people on both sides of their net and pull the net in. You know, pull, and that's what they call a hooki lau.
We had people on the hill here watching the bay. And they could see the schools of fish coming in. And they can tell you, like my dad and my grandpa, how many pups there were, what size they were. And when it got into a good place, they will come out and surround it with their nets.
I have real strong, warm memories of family, friends, neighbors, all of us coming together to do a hooki lau, which was a special event because it took planning and it took resources, but it brought everybody together for a day of fun and work. And there was work involved. But we have from the kupunas, to the young people, to the children. Everybody had a role and a part to play. Everybody contributed, but everybody also received.
The good thing is that it's just that getting together and talking star. You know, we enjoyed our company with each other. We were there with a friend, I've been sitting for a long time. Then we got to talk, you know, with each other. That was the nice thing about getting together with everybody. When the word got out, when you put the net out there, it got out real fast and the people came, you know, to pull the net in.
Working together, that was the most important thing. You would have to listen to the people in charge and they give you directions on what to do. Either row the boat, or pull up the net, or do something. And you have to follow really well. When, if they told you to jump off, you'd have to jump off and swim to shore, you know, that kind of stuff. So I remember that really well.
The old days, and we still are, family-oriented and community-oriented. Extended family goes from the immediate family to the community and even to the whole island. And you have to bring that concept back. And you'll see it, like during Iniki, time of disaster, putting people together and work together. And we're able to, and it's still there. It's gotta be nurtured. And it's gotta be instilled in people now.
Marilyn Wong Ke'ohho was the inspiration for bringing together the ideas of hooki lau but connecting that to the ideas of community building. And Marilyn's skills as a facilitator began to develop and grow through her work after Iniki, helping to rebuild Kauai, helping to bring people together. Following her work with Kauai Nidewish, she began to work for the Drug-Free Hawaii Coalition. And in that experience, there was always a need to learn how to bring the community together, to begin to deal with some of the issues that we were having on the island with the youth and drugs and alcoholism. But what she did was take a real positive preventative approach to it. And so the hooki lau was her way to present another way or the island style of building community through this experience.
I remember on Oahu, we actually had a workshop on the hooki lau. It was an opportunity for all the event attendees to see how the hooki lau works. And then being able to draw the comparison with the hooki lau and the actual bringing together of community.
The older days was a small-town feeling, small-town community. The communities were close. And there were a lot of things together, whether it was sports and when you went to everybody's parties and pools and the hooki laus, it brought everybody together. And you just don't, now, a lot of people, we don't know a lot of the community. And there are, we try to keep up the activities and fill it to have the community come together. But changes have come, you know, and westernization, I call it westernization, which changes people to not be so family-oriented, community-oriented, and they start actually becoming more self-oriented. And I think it's that small-town, small-place feeling, country feeling that is kind of slipping away. And hopefully, we don't lose it.
Well, I remember when we had a hooki lau and Mo'ahu and I came in, came out here. She was so excited because, you know, to be fishing with her friends all out here, you know. You know, so we really enjoyed it very much, you know. But I, you know, I hope this will happen again and again, you know. Just for this young generation to see what we still do.
You know, as a young teenager, you don't think about gathering community. When there's a call for hooki lau, the excitement just is in the air because it's a time when we're gonna go out fishing. There's gonna be a lot of fish and you're gonna catch a lot of fish. So as a young youngster, you don't think about the impact the gathering of people coming together for fishing. How does it impact community? In today's society, we see how the hookilama really impacts our daily life in whatever we do. If there's cooperation and if there's unity, the job can get done. If we can work in harmony, we can accomplish all things.
One of the key important parts of anything we do is to acknowledge and be grateful for what we do have. And Marilyn would say thank you to her for her leadership, her vision, that been helping us go forward. And if it's okay, we thank Bernard for his vision, his leadership, and his willingness to build community on behalf of all of us.
Mary Bernard, he was on our committee as well, back with Marilyn.
All the lessons he learned.
We had a great time, we learned a lot. And we're seeing now the fruits of that committee. Now Bernard's actually putting it into action.
Yeah.
It's just a great feeling to see it happening, how effective it is. And just utilizing the practice of the hooki lau in today's government, it's just awesome.
It's a good thing. Good job.
What we're talking about, we'd like to send a big mahalo to David and Les Sprout, Nani Larson and Kaleo Perez. And of course, I wasn't avoiding him, I was kind of keeping him off to the side. Mahalo to my son Marcotan Ferreira, you know. For helping us center the stage for my final words. And as people look at Marcotan, it keeps us connected just by him sitting there. Just showing his net, you know, sitting on Taksari. That's what's missing, folks. I want to bring that back and I hope we can work through that and using this example from Marilyn Wong and her Ohana, her daughter Aliyah, stay with Maria. Maria is right here, Maria, her daughter. And of course, her son, Alkin. And the big guy, of course, Ed Ke'ohho. How's your name, Ed? Uncle Ed. Of course, Marilyn was a dear dear person to me. Mr. Dearly, she really helped, really look at community, try to build community by bridging and connecting, as you can see. So I really want to thank Ke'ohho, Ohana, and of course Marilyn, her daughter, everybody for allowing us to bring her vision back and hopefully, we can get that moving and we'll actually do a hooki lau. I'll tell you guys later. But just the understanding of it. So if you notice, if you will notice, Uncle Charde has trained us, of course. So like our friends in the video, I knew of the hooki lau from growing up on Kauai. Stories of the hooki lau were always being told. It truly was something special. Shortly after Iniki, our community was working hard to rebuild. Our good friend Marilyn Wong Ke'ohho, as you heard on the tape, came up with a brilliant idea. And so she thought our community needed help to come together so that we could move forward in harmony. For Marilyn, the best way to do that was to bring the past into the present. At the time, I was, at that time, I was a recreation manager in the Department of Public Works because there wasn't a parks department back then. I had the privilege to join Marilyn's team along with, of course, Nani, Kaleo, and just the Ke'anui Nui Connection team. And we really did some good, good work. It was called the Ke'anui Nui Connection. And of course, Marilyn had the vision and the heart to know that we could use this concept of the hooki lau. Everyone pulling together toward a common goal that would benefit us all. To deal with the terrible problem of drug and alcohol abuse among our Kakee. So we did a hooki lau, as Kaleo and Nani's mentioned, on the north shore of Oahu and also here on Kauai. We all learned from Marilyn and we all learned together. Before I go any further, I want to acknowledge, of course, all of you again for being here today in the family of Marilyn Wong Ke'ohho. Marilyn's lessons, the first she taught us was about the roles of each of the participants of the hooki lau. First, there was the kiloia, or the spotter, who looked for the fish and singled it with, singled it was time for the hooki lau. There was the ukana, who was responsible for making sure all the equipment was available for the event. There was a hoa anukoke, responsible for working through challenges, troubleshooting, so to speak. Another role was the lulu, the diver, who made sure the nets were set properly. And of course, there was the luna, supervising the effort. There was the mahale, the role was to portion out the catch. And of course, finally, the best part of all was the pa'ina, the celebration and meal that brought everyone in the community together to rejoice in the accomplishment of the hooki lau. Those of you who have never participated in a hooki lau are familiar with all of these roles and they're well-defined. Everyone had a skill or a strength. And that skill was applied to the hooki lau where it could benefit the effort the most. Working with Marilyn on the morning day hooki lau was an experience that none of us will ever forget. We knew then and we know now, whatever difficult issues we're facing, and we will all know we're facing many difficult issues right here on our beautiful island of Kauai and Ni'ihau, that working together as we used to during the hooki lau will move us through it and make us a stronger, stronger community. So how can we apply the lessons of the hooki lau to the challenges we face today? How can we use the hooki lau to make great things happen for our community and to bring us together as one Ohana? I've been thinking a lot about it lately, about Marilyn's wisdom and how she taught us. We each have a role to play building and connecting our community. The roles of the hooki lau correspond to the important roles that we must fulfill if we are to enjoy the bountiful catch at the end of the day. The kiloia, or spotter's role, for example, is very important. The spotter is the person who is listening, watching, and looking intuitively for the opportunity that will bring us together to reach our goal. The kiloia knows when the moment has arrived and alerts us to the opportunity. The ukana is the one who is the keeper of the community assets. Like equipment needed for the hooki lau, ukana has the resources and knows what is available in community and can help bring all of those things to task to ensure success. There are always challenges. There are always among us, there are those among us who can work successfully through challenges like the hoa anukoke. Good troubleshooters and facilitators. People who can bring groups together and find solutions are essential to any successful effort. Then, there are the lulu, the divers. These are the ones who really get their hands dirty. They fix what needs to be fixed and literally chase the fish into the net. Being a lulu is a special skill. And there is no success unless you're a skilled and dedicated lulu on board or on your team. And of course, there must always be the luna, the supervisor, the leader, making sure that the hooki lau team keeps moving forward and guiding the group with good judgment and charismatic leadership. The luna continuously evaluates where we're going, guides the effort to success. The mahale are double. The mahale are those who divide up the catch. They ensure that there is fair and equal distribution, and that everyone receives a portion. The mahale also provides valuable reflection on what has to be accomplished so that there is deep sense of accomplishment amongst all involved. And then, there is the celebration, the pa'ina. Those who provide the opportunity to share in the feast, to celebrate the catch, to bring all together for a strong sense of community and accomplishment. All of these things were central in the Hookila, and they're essential in everything we do today. The point is, folks, and my dear people, that, you know, that is the spirit that we all move, and moves me forward for the next four years. And I'm confident that I will have each and every one of you there right beside me. It will be an honor to work side by side, again, with our council chair, Raposo, our vice-chair, Kakaholo, and the mayor, members of our county council, to provide leadership and guidance as we pull the nets and bring the bountiful catch to shore together. And that, my dear friends, kind of wraps it up. So, in closing, I want to wrap this up and share with you just a small glimpse of my favorite hymn that ties everything in, folks. And I'm going to try and do this as the hula girls come down the hallway area and say that there's three special things in this world that make things work, that make things flow. Number one is faith, faith to stay strong. Number two is hope, hope to never give up. And number three is good old love, unconditional love. If you love unconditionally, anything, anything is possible. So I'm hoping that through faith, hope, and love, and Iha', Ohana, can join in this short piece. And then we'll end this with a great celebration. Eh'okomau yaka'ukila, let the Hookila continue!
Stay standing and don't leave. I'm really invite the council members and the mayor to come to the front here in front of the table. We're going to do a very, the first we're going to do, and we want everybody in the audience to join us as well. Letting the hula go. So first of all, let's start with the Ami. Ami, we're going to give the council members a little hip strike. Now, come on, if you move those hips. How many of you guys are going to the Hookila? Let's go, everybody on here! I see the ladies look good, the guys not so good. All right, you're not put the Ami, you're going to Kaholo. Do the right, follow the girls in front. Now, I want everybody in the audience to do this as well. If you can't Kaholo, at least you can do the hand motion, right? Other side. Ready? Oh, we're going. Oh, we go, nice.
To the Hookila.
Oh, you know, upside, everybody's side. There's a big, all the men all together, guys, we need to get together.
We throw our heads, trying to see.
All right, you come, Ami. You start in the, you start. You start working together, you finally get it.
What a wonderful day for this year.
Hands up again. I don't know, I don't see the minute of peace in this station, come on, guys! Nice job, applause for the mayor and county council!
That's a hard act of follow. I'm supposed to be doing a closing prayer. I want to tell you a little short story of my matrix. But it's two little boys. One was very dark with curly hair and dark skin. And the other one was blond, blue eyes, light skin. And the dark-haired boy said, "My Jesus in church is dark." He's not blond with blue eyes and white. And the other boy said, "Oh, yes, he is. Jesus is white, and he has blond hair and blue eyes." The boys grew up, and even as teenagers, they still fought because they still had the same pictures in their church. And the dark one said, "I'm telling you, Jesus is dark, and he's got dark hair, dark eyes." And the other boy said, "No, he's white, blond hair, blue eyes." They grew up, and they were still fighting about the same thing, but amazing thing is they both died at the same time. And they were up in heaven. And the boy that was white with the blond hair and the blue eyes, he said, "I know you, you're Saint Peter." And he said, "Yes, I am." He says, "Well, we have a question. Is Jesus white with blond hair, blue eyes, is he?" And the other boy said, "No, tell him, he's dark, dark hair, dark eyes." He says, "Wait a minute, he's coming now, let's ask him." And he steps in and says, "Aloha!" Thank you, Jesus. And now, a prayer. Allah, that are amazing, thou art awesome. You put your hand upon this man. And he served this island and served people. No man can have a position unless you called him. And you called him again. I ask you this morning, Lord, that you would fill him with your wisdom. That he would walk in your wisdom. That he would speak with your wisdom, and that his decisions will have the wisdom of God the Father. Give him knowledge that he would understand, and of course, the hearts of the people. I pray for the staff, Lord God, all these gentlemen here, and the young women that's up here too long. They have jobs to do. I ask for a unity in working together, Lord. That any oppositions that would come, people of all churches will stand up and pray. That if there is a unity, you will be involved in everything that they do. And thank you, Lord, for your blessings upon them. I thank you, Lord God, that it would be mighty four years coming for this island. And the changes, Lord God, whatever changes there is, we will not come against it, Lord. We'll pray. We'll back up our mayor. Thank you, Lord, for this mayor. Thank you, Lord, for all the people on this island. We just want to give you all the praise and the glory for it. And we ask this in Jesus' name, and all the saints say...
Amen!
Areyu.
Oh God, Lord God, who are exalted in reverence, honor, and glory, rejoice in thee, blessings, praises, and thanksgiving. Therefore, love all thy servants that are gathered here, bless us all in all of our work. May thy Holy Spirit abide with all of us, for thy will be done. Therefore, will ye be praised in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I could ask everyone to stand as we come towards the end of this amazing afternoon we've had. And we present Yesamaalos doing for us, Hava'ia Loha. And if you remain standing after Hava'ia Loha, as we do the Hukane, followed by the mayor, Oliva, Halau, Halei, Mokihana, Olaina, Ala. And then the reception of our dignitaries. And then at that time, everyone's invited to the reception out in the lounge.
...